All right, very good. I'm gonna go ahead and get us started and call this meeting to order. And before I have you call roll, just a reminder that we're now supposed to introduce ourselves and our location as far as city, county, and state. Go for it, Erin.
All right, Dean, not here. Liam?
Here, Sagatuck, Allegan, Michigan.
Okay, Peterson? I think it's not here. Stanton?
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to look up the county, but Lauren Stanton, Pensacola Beach, Florida. I don't know the county.
All right.
Escambia, Escambia County. I'll be there next week.
I thought it said Esconaba. Nah.
No.
Truster?
Uh, here in Key West, Monroe County, Florida.
With planes landing in the background. All right, Beckett is not here. Anne Lewis?
Louis, City of Sagatuck, Allegan County, State of Michigan. Good? And I believe our, our, our three partners are all excused with previous communication with us as far as the reasons. So if everybody's okay with that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan for the city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm so jealous of everyone that's in Florida right now. The first thing I want to acknowledge is that this is a pretty, pretty heavy agenda for workshop and that you're with the quorum, but you're, you're missing about half of your squad on council. So my recommendation is to, to keep this, this meeting pretty light as far as discussion goes and save, save the meat of discussion for your Monday council meeting. The city manager's report is in the agenda packet, starting on the second page. And there's this one update that I'd like to make and it's related to the Blue Star Trail. In that, uh, there's a couple of corrections that I'll make for, for Monday's council meeting and that the Friends of the Blue Star Trail Group have committed themselves to, uh, the expenditures of the capital costs for the trail. But that's after grants are applied for and received by the municipalities. Um, and then also just a minor point that invoices will be paid out by the, the Friends of the Blue Star Trail Group. Um, but they're gonna go through the, uh, a liaison, uh, of that group and not um, gonna be submitted directly to the Friends of the Blue Star Trail. So just a couple of updates that I'll make, uh, for again, uh, Monday's council meeting. Um, but managers reports in the packet, happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right, any questions from council? Uh, I just, I just have a general comment regarding the social district. Uh, I noticed we've been getting quite a bit of really good news coverage lately. I think the latest was in M Live. Prior to that, I think we had some Holland News and I think there was another one that Lisa Myes had shared with us. So that's really good to see. Um, Ryan, really quickly, um, the number who've applied with the the city is 10 and all these folks are going through the process with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, correct?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Yes, uh, that's, that's correct. Um, Lisa Myes did, uh, an interview with Fox seven, I'm gonna say Fox 17, hopefully that's correct uh, this morning. And she reported in that interview that three established, three establishments have received their licenses. Um, but in total, 10 have applied. So, um, looking, you know, going forward, uh, for the spring season, there, there's a possibility of having 10 restaurants involved in the social district.
All right, very good, good. Any other questions from council? All right, we'll move on then. Agenda changes, any additions or deletions to this very hefty agenda that we'll keep light? No? All right, with that, I'll move on, uh, to public comment. Uh, well, if you could, I know we, I see we've got a number of folks on the line joining us. You're welcome to, um, make comment on any agenda item. Uh, before you do so, please introduce yourself and your, uh, city of residence or residence location. You don't need to give us your specific address. And please, please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, I think that's it. Erin, who do we got?
Chris Clark and Glenn DeYoung, I see.
All right, let's go with Chris first. How you doing, Chris?
I'm good, Garn. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Uh, my name's Chris Clark. I am a resident of Sagatuck Township. And I've got a, I, I'm the one who's organizing the observance of National Trails Day. Uh, you have a proclamation on the agenda. And I thought I would just tell you a little bit about National Trails Day and, uh, and a couple of other things. National Trails Day started 25 years ago. There are about a thousand observances all over the country. And it's about advocating for trails. In our case, it's about helping people learn about where the trails are, hiking trails are in our area. There are more than 20 of them within the Blue Star, within five miles of the Blue Star Bridge. Um, and a lot of people don't know where they are. And what we're going to do on the June 5th is we're going to hold a trail scramble where we're gonna ask people to visit the different trail heads. And if they visit several of them, they get a coupon to, that they can, uh, they can use at several, uh, great places, including Isabel's. Yay! And, uh, so I won't go into too much of the detail on that. Um, I'd be happy to tell you more about it later. Besides the trail scramble, there are, we're hoping to have a service project where people will work on one of the trails. And the Visitors Bureau is going to release a paper map of hiking trails that I designed. They're funding it. Uh, they're gonna snazz it up a little bit and that should be, um, able, available on that day. Guardian Brewing is going to brew a special ale for the day in honor of the day. And there are lots of other organizations involved, including Rotary Club, the, the Scouts, Outdoor Discovery Center, the Historical Society, and several local businesses. This Radar Hill Hiking Club is an outgrowth of a group that some of you are aware of, the Trial, Tri-Community Trail Master Plan. And there are another item at the end of your agenda is a long proposal that I actually assembled for the group with the group. And, um, we're hoping that you'll, you'll take a look at that. We're not expecting you to, to deal with all of it right away. But what we'd really like is if, uh, when you get the time, if you particularly look at the first group of items and consider, um, approving those and acting on those relatively soon, it'd be awesome. Um, and if you have any questions about any of those things, I'd be happy to answer them now or later. I sent a, a real minor update to the proposal to Ryan. We, I had made the mistake of putting Amalanchier Park in the city and in fact, it is in the township. So I corrected that and, uh, had to adjust the proposal slightly. So there's an updated copy that's in Ryan's email, uh, for you. So any questions, we'd be happy to field. Thank you.
All right, yeah, Chris, we'll, we'll, we'll circle back around on that when it comes up on the agenda again. All right? All right, Glenn, I think your hand was up next. And then I see Dick Waskin. Okay?
Yep, needed to unmute. Glenn DeYoung, Sagatuck resident. Um, I'd like to speak to Agenda Item 9D, the Lowe's Grant Nomination. Um, last month as a Lowe's customer, I received notification about their hometown grant program. And it's a unique opportunity where customers, but not municipal staff, can actually nominate their hometown for a grant from Lowe's. I immediately saw a way forward for the gazebo bandstand in Wicks Park. And while I was not part of the petition, petition drive, um, I saw this as an opportunity to rehab what is clearly a valued icon in our community. It's a two-round judging process. The first round is based on quality of the submission. And judges will select 200 projects from, uh, 50 states in Washington DC. Which will then go on to a second round of judging. And in this round, the projects are scored to ensure balance between urban and rural communities and diverse geographic reach. So basically it's on merit, then it's kind of on luck. If selected, the government entity, in this case Sagatuck, must agree to facilitate and oversee completion of the project by October 31st, 2021. Um, yes, the timeline is short, so I'm giving you a heads up now so we can be, be prepared in case we are lucky enough to be selected. At submission, I do need to give an estimated cost, total cost for the project. And lots of local Sagatuck and Douglas residents have stepped up to help with this. We are thinking big, uh, as the request can be up to about an average of $100,000. So we weren't trying to save money. We were trying to put in everything that we could think of. And if we don't get it, it can certainly be pared down later. So whether awarded or not, we are, uh, we'll share our thinking, our plans and, um, cost estimates with you. Um, I want to give credit to those who have stepped up to help with this nomination. It's really been incredible. We have a great group of citizens here in Sagatuck Douglas area, um, that are always willing to volunteer. So Peg Sanford provided lots of history for me because I do have to write the nomination, um, answer three questions worth about 250 words each. Felicia Fairchild is a tourism, travel marketing whiz, as we all know, and she coached me to move from my scholarly writing to a more marketing perspective. So I'm on version four and it's much improved with her input. Robin Bauer is a visionary and a great help in securing cost estimates for the various pieces of the project. Roger Marcy is providing a builder's and contractor's estimate. John Kerr of the History Center took photos for me because I can submit three. Ted Rada contributed to landscaping ideas. Stephen Boyd offered his perspective from decades of, um, commercial building. Um, and Erin, Peter, and Cindy at City Hall all have been helpful answering my questions. So I hope I haven't missed anyone. Um, I'm gonna remain on the Zoom call should anyone have any questions, um, when this agenda item comes up.
All right, great. Thanks, Glenna.
Yep, I have one more thing. I hope, I, I have a couple of seconds here. I also support the Trail Master Plan, which is Item 9E. I joined John and Chris, um, and Betsy in this core group a few months ago. Um, and while, as Chris mentioned, this term is more of a long, uh, plan is more of a long-term vision. Uh, we will be narrowing it down to some actionable items, um, in the near future. So thank you.
Thanks, Glenna. All right, I see Dick Waskin's got his hand up. Go for it.
Yeah, Dick Waskin, uh, 6576 Heron Ridge Road, Sagatuck Township. What I wanted to just bring up, uh, that could be hopefully put on a future agenda for the, uh, council is, as you know, um, lots of expressway work is going on right now and Exit 41 is closed and traffic is being redirected onto the Blue Star Highway. Uh, we know that we've been having a discussion, especially about the intersection of Lake Street and Blue Star. And how that's been a difficult intersection, not only for traffic, but for pedestrians, for bicyclists with no crosswalks, no way to get from one side to the other. Uh, this is being exacerbated by what's happening this, uh, right now. Uh, with traffic being rerouted onto the Blue Star because everything from the north has to come south and everybody who wants to get up from, on the south has to go north. So traffic is being quadrupled. And this summer, I think we're going to find a very serious problem with that traffic. And that my suggestion and perhaps can be discussed, and this would be, I think, a great opportunity to, to do a little experiment is put a temporary traffic light at the intersection of Lake Street and Blue Star. Like they do in any construction project, it's on a big arm that hangs over the street and does the light. And put it maybe a temporary crosswalks across at that intersection. To facilitate, uh, basically, uh, traffic movement, uh, people being able to make a left-hand turn at that intersection. But also to be safe. Um, we know that intersection is not safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and runners. And I think this will be a great opportunity to test the situation, to see if a light at that intersection would make sense and if it would work. So I'd ask if, uh, council could please consider this and not too delayed because the project is already started. Exit 41 is already closed. And it's planned on going all through summer. And I don't think it's wise to wait until it becomes a super issue. But get proactive and get things set up to see if we can't break traffic up a little bit there and make, uh, safe ways of crossing the Blue Star. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dick. Anybody else? Public comment on agenda items only. I don't see anybody else, Erin, do you? I don't, wait, I see Jane Underwood waving her hand. You go, girl. Unmute yourself. You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, all right, go for it.
I would like to second Dick Waskin's proposal. Because trying to make a left turn from Lake to Blue Star any time of the year is dangerous. And with the extra traffic that we're going to have, I think this is a great idea, Dick, and I hope the council will take it up. ASAP. Thank you.
Great. And just for the record, Jane, introduce yourself and where you reside, please.
Oh, okay, Jane Underwood, Sagatuck.
All right, very good. Anyone else, anybody else? Public comment? I don't see anybody's hand. Erin?
I do not see anyone, ma'am.
All right, very good. With that, we'll move on to discussion items. Uh, the first one being the radar building request. Ryan?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is a, this is a request that's, um, we love these types of requests. This one is, uh, to do nothing, uh, is basically the request from, uh, the Historical Society. Uh, the, they would like to do some due diligence on seeing if they can save that building. Uh, and so we can talk about it a little bit more on Monday. Happy to entertain any questions on this item.
All right, is anybody on the call from this group? Don't see anybody.
I am John Kerr.
Hi, John. You wanna add anything?
Uh, yeah, I wanna add, I'm John Kerr. I'm from Douglas, Michigan. There we go. Um, first of all, I mean, we appreciate this, uh, but I wanna be clear, this is, the request is not from the Historical Society. Right now, it's from a group of people in the community and I'm, I'm, I represent the Historical Society because I'm on the board and I'm part of the, the group, but um, our director wants to be clear, at this point, we're not making the request, um, but we're, we're supportive of it. And the other thing I wanna say, we are planning, Russ Gardner's planning in two weeks at the next workshop to participate. He's got more information and we'll have more, uh, formal request about what we'd like to do at that point. But, um, thank you. And I know we've talked to everybody in city council and we appreciate your time, uh, and your support for what we're doing. And I'll stop now.
All right, so I'm, I'm guessing that, uh, we really won't do anything until we hear from you in two weeks. How's that?
That's our plan. Thank you.
Fair. Any comments or questions from council? That's an easy request.
I, I would just say I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing more about it and, um, I learned a lot meeting with you, John, and, um, this is an interesting project, so staying tuned.
Very good. All right, with that, we'll move on. A special event permit, I believe, for the Sagatuck Center for the Arts. Looks like this is Erin or Ryan?
Erin, you wanna take it?
I sure can. Uh, the SCA is just, uh, looking to do an event that they do annually, uh, called Jump Into Summer. And it will be an event that will be sort of half at the SCA and half in the park. They wanna use Coughlin Park sort of as their green space for kids' activities and things like that. Then they plan to have, uh, food trucks and, uh, their bar open at the SCA. And they've got a plan to, uh, keep it safe with COVID, with social distancing and all of that. So it's pretty much, I've got all the details attached. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. There's kind of a summary in there describing what they have in mind.
All right, questions from council? Uh, I read in here that they were gonna take the, the regular COVID precautions. Um, I appreciate, is there anybody from the SCA on that would like to add to this? Do you see anyone, Erin?
I do not see anyone on the list.
Okay. No, and I'd, I'd be curious, what, if council has any thoughts or concerns about, um, the number that they're anticipating and the setup? Any questions or concerns?
I mean, I just think as long as we're following state requirements, I mean, it's, it's, we know what's happening now, but we don't know what's happening in June. And I think the, the policy that we have of just relying on the state guidelines is smart and you know, it's, it looks like a great event and fingers crossed that it can happen.
Do we know, Ryan, what the numbers are now for outdoor events like this?
I think they're at 300 still.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and they've done a nice job. I know I've been to several of the SCA events, the outdoor concerts, for lack of a better word, and they've been really good about the distancing and the setup. And, and, um, you know, just keeping everybody safe. Um, so I would anticipate that they would do the same. Okay, will we vote on this for approval on Monday, Ryan, then?
That's correct.
All right, all right, very good. Uh, with that, I'll move on then to our floating homes, floating home ordinance. Ryan?
Hey, what a lengthy ordinance that we provided in your agenda packet. And so this is one of the items that I'd recommend that, um, you begin your discussions, uh, on Monday night. But given the length of, of the ordinance, which is kind of two-pronged, one is a regulatory ordinance with police powers. The other is gonna be a zoning ordinance, which should be a lot, um, a lot shorter, um, a little more straightforward. Um, I, I would recommend at some point that you, that you consider having a special, a special meeting, a special workshop to kind of work through the details on this one. And the reason that I, that we're putting it forward to you all is that, um, the council had had discussed wanting this in place before, um, Memorial Weekend, um, or early May. So we just wanted to get something out there, uh, for consideration. I don't expect, uh, much or any discussion, uh, this evening. Uh, I think I saw Jeff Sluggett ju- join the call. Um, although this is not in his wheelhouse, this is Cliff Blooms. I don't know if he has any comments or, uh, at this time.
Yeah, Ryan Clipper's on.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I'm here. This is Cliff.
Hey, Cliff, so, you know, I, you, you probably just heard what I said. I'm just recommending that they
Yeah.
they have a, a special meetings to, to talk about this.
Madam Chairperson, this is Cliff. Can I speak briefly?
Yes, please, go for it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, Ryan did a good job of summarizing it. Obviously, it's a very long ordinance. Uh, because of the topic involved, although I think, uh, Cindy and Ryan have some ideas to perhaps shorten it. And at some point in time, it would be good to get a general direction from council, which way people are leaning. Obviously, one option we put in here that would make it very short would be just the band floating homes. That's probably not very realistic or desirable. So the other alternative is to regulate it. Uh, but depending on which way the council wants to go to allow it in all areas or only certain areas such as full-service marinas, a lot of it would be cut out. And as Ryan pointed out, there would also be a parallel zoning ordinance amendment, which would be mercifully much shorter.
Okay, all right. Questions, comments from council? Go ahead, Lauren?
Yeah, I just, you know, I wanna be able to sit in a special meeting and, you know, go through this with the attorney and you know, there's, if, this is really far-reaching and it, I'm not comfortable with a lot of this. So I do hope we can, you know, make it a much shorter ordinance and have some more wise, uh, you know, why is this not allowed, you know, so we can, you know, be able to tell people why we're choosing, um, some of the language that's being used. So special meeting, looking forward to it.
Okay, anybody else? Yep, I see lots of nods. Okay. Uh, Ryan, if I could, and if council's okay with this, just to direct you to try to find a convenient time for us to have a special meeting on this one topic, um, within the next few weeks. Is council okay with that? Good. Ken's giving me a thumbs up. Holly's nodding, Lauren's nodding. Okay, does that work for you, Ryan?
It does. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, very good. And that way we can really just focus on this and get to the, and of course, we'll work with Cliff and Jeff and their schedules. All right?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for calling in. All right, uh, on to the next item on the agenda, the Dune Grass Fence, Dune Ridge Fence.
Yeah, thank you. To be Dune Ridge, I, I keep, uh, switching it up, um, sand dunes, dune grass, dune ridge. So, sorry, it, it should be Dune Ridge Fence. A- and likewise, this one's a little complicated, so I, you know, I think we should hold discussion for, for Monday night. And so I have, I have no comments on this item at this point.
Okay, very good. Questions from council? Is this one, one that we wanna put a timeframe to as well, Ryan? Would you like to try to get this done in a certain period of time? Yes, no?
Um, you know, that's really a council decision. Um, yeah.
All right.
It's, it's really up to you all.
Okay, so let's leave for Monday when the rest of our colleagues are with us and see if we can, if we can, uh, arrange for a time a schedule, so to speak, to get this done. Looks like Jeff has his hand up. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and I, and I real quickly, I, I do think, um, I'm not gonna be able to participate. I already have another engagement Monday night. But I do think we're looking for some direction from the council in terms of, uh, a- as you know, there's a memo that's actually on the screen right now with a recommendation of sorts. I think we're gonna simply be looking Monday night to whether the council is comfortable with proceeding in that manner. Because yeah, bottom, bottom line is we need some direction at this point.
Okay, yeah, and the recommendation was on the second page of this, the possible motion?
Correct.
Got it. Yeah, all right. Any other comments, council? Oh, all right, very good. Moving on. Uh, next, next thing, Radar Hill Hiking Club proclamation. Ryan?
Thank you. You, you heard comments on this one, um, earlier in, in open, uh, public comment. I think they're just looking for your support. So I have no additional comments beyond that.
Okay. Chris, anything else you would like to add?
Um, I, I put language in my message that would, uh, hopefully encourage you all not to ask me to fill out a special event request. Uh, I wasn't sure, so I, I thought I'd explain why, by, uh, you know, with the language I put in there. So hopefully that, that will be the case. Other than that, if you have any questions, as I said, feel free to contact me at the number or the email that's there.
Okay, council, any questions? Don't see anything. All right, this looks pretty straightforward. It looks fun. It's actually a great idea. I think it'll be, is John Vanderbeek involved with this?
Yes, the
Okay.
The club is sort of an outgrowth of the, the trail plan.
And Glenna, you're also involved with this then? Yep, nodding her head. All right, cool, that should be great. I think it'll be fun to see what kind of participation we get. Very cool. All right, we'll, uh, decide on Monday. All right, next one is the banner sign request. Cindy? Or I can do this one, too. Cindy on?
Cindy just notified me a second ago that she was having some stability issues with her internet.
Yeah, this is a banner, a request for a banner at the pallet sign. Similar to the other pallet sign requests that you receive. Um, there is a slight change in the size of the banner. Instead of being 12 by four, it would be 12 by six because there's a lot of information they want to communicate on it. And that is well within the maximum size, um, permitted. If I'm breaking up, because you are breaking up with me sometimes, um, maybe, um, Ryan could fill in the details.
Okay, so far, so good. Cindy, Ryan?
No, I think it's a housekeeping item for, for Monday night.
All right, very good. And, uh, the Tri-Community Recycling Committee greatly appreciates them doing this. I'll add our five cents worth.
Erin, how?
All right, any questions? Yeah?
Erin, where's the signup at? How's the signup going?
Uh, I have 100 spaces left. So we have, we had spots for 280 cars. And I have 100 spots left and I'm really, really encouraging people to sign up. I'm envisioning people just driving up the day and I really wanna try to do as best as possible, keep that pretty pretty limited if possible. So if you all can spread the word, please sign up. That would be really, really good. So, so far, so good. I mean, we've had it out there for a week and already over 50% full. So that's, that's a good sign of an indication of need. So all right, anything else on the banner? Don't see it. All right, moving on. Finalized strategic meeting date. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, big, big announcement on this one. Ken reached out to Ken reached out to me before the meeting via email and said the May 20th date, he could change his schedule. So it looks like we have a strategic planning meeting coming up on May 20th. So thank you, Ken, for rearranging your schedule. Happy to do that.
All right. Awesome. That's excellent. Anything else on that one, Ryan? Since that's a good one? Nope. All right. Very good. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda items, Spear Street Boat Launch Agreement.
Yeah, three, three items all included on this page that's on your screen now. You have the Spear Street Boat Launch Agreement. That's the agreement for having the star of Saga Tuck collect the, the chain ferry, the, oh no, star of Saga Tuck collect the boat launch fee. The Social District Resolution for Whiskey and Butter. Whiskey and Butter is a new restaurant coming into Saga Tuck. And so they weren't included in the original resolution. So we're adding them at your Monday night meeting. And then likewise Culver Street Parking Agreement. That's an annual agreement with the, the high school to allow them to monitor the parking lot and take some of the proceeds or half the proceeds for their various causes. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions from council? These are pretty straightforward. Looks like. None? All right. Very good. We'll move into Monday for general consent. All right. With that, we've come to public, boy, y'all are good. We've come to public comment portion on any item that you want. So for whoever would like to comment publicly, please introduce yourself. Please limit your, tell us your place of residence and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. And if you can either raise the hand on your Zoom, I can find you or Erin can find you. Any public comment at this time? Not see anybody. Erin, are you?
I do not, ma'am.
All right. With that, going once, going twice, done. All right. With that, you have several pieces of communication in your packet. Won't read through all those. Any questions on any of these items? Since we have Glenna with us, I thought we might at least afford her the opportunity for any questions if you might have them for her, given that we're zipping through this agenda really quick. Anything else you'd like to add on that, Glenna?
Nope. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So right now the obligation of the city is really nothing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we get it, if we get it, it's not a matching grant. It's a, you know, just, just oversight and fiduciary.
Okay. Very good. Good. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, council comments, I'll just start at the top of my screen. Ken Traster in wonderful, probably Key West by the airport.
I, I am, and I'm right under the glide path to the airport. So if you hear this huge roar, you know what it is. I would just comment in support of Mr. Waskin's comment earlier about traffic control on, on Blue Star Highway. You know, I, I've not been in favor of installing permanent traffic lights for a number of reasons, including the study that we had some years ago that showed it would actually make traffic the passability of traffic through that intersection would be worse. But certainly the circumstances are different. If we're running all of the freeway traffic through Blue Star Highway now, it's going to be a tough summer. I think if we were able to do a temporary light at either there or actually at Allegan Road in Blue Star, I think that's something worth looking into. We had talked in the past about actually having a light at Allegan rather than Lake Street. Because that could, that could in concert with the traffic light that's in Douglas at Center Street, it could create gaps in traffic so that the traffic coming out of Lake Street would have an opportunity to move. So I would definitely support looking into something like this for the summer. And that's it.
Very good. All right. I see Holly next on my screen.
Thanks, Garin, but I have nothing, nothing to add. I just want to thank everybody that really stepped up in the meeting today. There's great projects, great events and a lot of work. And thanks, Dick Waskin, for bringing your idea forward and I agree with Ken, I agree with some of what Ken said, and I think it'd be interesting to look at that. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Lauren?
Yeah, thank you. I will agree with Mr. Waskins. I think Lake Street, you can't make a left-hand turn there even in the off-season a lot of times. So I think by putting a temporary one there, boy, would we really get an idea of whether there's issues. And you know, especially with, you know, the pedestrian traffic, that's a big deal. Being able to get pedestrians across through there along with making that left-hand turn. It's a really important part. And I think just by doing the temporary one, it would be a really way to understand whether we need one there. And we need to look into the cost of that and see what, what we can do. Maybe Ryan can look into the cost of the temporary one for us. Other than that, I'm looking forward to some of the special meetings coming up.
Very good. All right. Yeah, I'll, I'll just concur with everybody's thoughts. Thanks so much, Dick, for bringing that up. I'm hoping you might also be visiting our colleagues across the river and recommending the same thing on Wiley and Blue Star. Because it's become almost impossible to get out there as well. That, that might be a great joint project between the two cities. I also want to thank, we had upwards of 25 people on the call today. And I really appreciate individual, our constituents' interest in our meetings. And so thanks, everybody. We've lost a couple of them already. They've fallen off, but, but that's all good. I also want to thank Glenna for your time and effort. I know you've done quite a bit already with this grant. It's, it's, it's wonderful when folks will step up and volunteer to lead these kinds of efforts. And please know how much we appreciate that. The same, you know, goes for the folks with the radar. I don't know if John's on with us or Chris is on with us still, but having folks step up and kind of take the initiative, I think in the end is much appreciated because there's a lot of legwork that goes along with those projects that, you know, we just don't have enough staff to do all that. So to have you all taking the initiative is, is absolutely wonderful. And the same goes for John, who I think Vanderbeek, who's also in Florida. So all of Saga Tuck is just about in Florida. So with that, that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Very good. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Stan?
Yes.
Traster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
That couldn't be easier.
All right. All right, everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
See you Monday.
Thanks all.
All right. Bye-bye.